Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Let me welcome you to the Tallahassee City Commission meeting regularly scheduled for four o'clock. Today is Wednesday, February 12th. Busy day in Tallahassee. It is exactly halfway through the legislative session. It is Florida State Day at the Capitol. Go Knowles. It is Florida League of Cities Day at the Capitol. The firefighters from across the state are here as well, and today is my son's birthday.
Happy Birthday, Tommy.
Let me be very clear. We're going to run a very efficient meeting so I can make family dinner tonight. All kidding aside, we've got a great agenda, and I do think that we will be able to be able to move forward in an efficient manner. It is my honor and privilege to introduce my friend, Iman Monir, of the Tallahassee Islamic Center, who will be providing our invocation today. Iman Monir, thank you for joining us. If you'll please stand for the invocation.
It's my honor to be and to be with you all. Thank you, our mayor. Thank you for all of you. We ask our Creator, our Lord, to make it easy on all of us, and to show us the right path as right, and to help us to follow it, and to show us the wrong path as wrong, and to help us to avoid it. A'udzubillahi minash shaytana rajeem. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahirabbil 'alameen. Arrahmanirrahim. Maliki yomiddin. Inyaakna'buduwa inyaaknastain. Ihdinas sira'tal mustaqim. Sira'tal ladina an'amta alaihim. Gairilmaghdub alaihim. Amin. Oh, Lord, you are the most mercy. You are the most merciful. You created us. You see us. You know what we are doing. And we shall go back to you one day. Oh, Lord, help us to do the best in this life, and to be in the best. Oh, Lord, give us the best choice to make for our beloved citizens and people. Oh, Lord, as you assign these people to help us to improve our city. Oh, Lord, give them the strength, and the help, and the support, to do the best for us, for themselves, and to make the right decision. Oh, Lord, show us the right path, as the right path, and help us to follow it. Oh, Lord, oh, our Creator, we are in need for you, and you are not in need for none of us. So, help us to do the best. Help us to improve our city. Help us to improve our relation, and to keep us safe and secure, and bring blessing, peace, and love, and harmony between the people that you created. And when we go back to you, oh, Lord, make it easy on us, and make it the best meeting ever will be. Amin.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Iman Monir, thank you so very much for the invocation. Mr. Administrator, manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. We've added item 13.06. It deals with the approval and ratification of an MOU for the promotion of lieutenants in TPD.
Excellent. Any questions about the modification? All right. Any other modifications?
No, sir.
Excellent. All right. We have a couple of presentations. Mr. Richardson, why don't you come join us as well? As my colleagues -- excuse me, folks, I got a little tickled today. I apologize. As my colleagues are joining us, I would like to mention that your City Commission just left a great event called Stuff the Bus, right outside of City Hall, where the city, in conjunction with the Second Harvest, collects food for our community. And I do want to give a great thank you to Angela Baldwin of our team, Monique Ellsworth that's with Second Harvest. Monique, we are very proud of you and your organization and everything that you do for us. Angela, very proud of Star Metro and everything you do for our city family and for the community. Thank you very much. Now, for the first presentation, I am actually going to first ask Ms. Terri Cleland, the President of the Tallahassee Chapter of the League of Women Voters, and other representatives of the league, to come join us. But I am going to ask the Mayor Pro Tem, Diane Williams Cox, to please present this proclamation as a longstanding, outstanding member, along with Dr. Elaine Bryant, of the League of Women Voters. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. It is indeed a pleasure to present, from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas on February 14th, 1920, the League of Women Voters was organized at the Victory Convention of the National American Women Suffrage Association's Chicago, Illinois. And whereas the league was formed six months prior to, but in anticipation of ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment giving women the right to vote in the United States. And whereas the league was a political experiment designed to help 20 million women carry out their new responsibilities as voters by educating them about issues. And whereas from the beginning, the league determined that it would be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any political party or individual candidate. And whereas the league continues today as a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. And whereas today, the league is composed of members in over 800 local county and state leagues in all 50 states, plus the District of Columbia, the Virgin Islands, and Hong Kong. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Florida was incorporated on October 29, 1939, and is composed of 29 local leagues with thousands of members, including us. And whereas leagues at all levels, among other activities, register voters, educate voters by holding candidate forums and publishing voter guides, publish public policy research, and hold meetings on key issues. And whereas the league is a civic organization that has fought since 1920 to improve government and engage everyone in decisions that impact their lives. Now therefore, he, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, along with my colleagues on the City Commission, do hereby recognize February 14th as the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters.
Let me just say a word. That long proclamation of mine sums it up. But you all exemplify what we are about. It's about engaging citizens in their democracy. This is what makes America work, and I'm just so grateful to see so many people here today engaged in that process. We've got a big election year coming up, so we're going to be out there doing what we do best, registering voters, holding election forums that we're going to invite candidates to. We hope that you will come because we want people to be informed voters. And this is a wonderful anniversary for us across the country. We are going to be celebrating big time here in Tallahassee. We are going to have a celebration in a couple of weeks, on the 28th of February, at the very apex of the political power structure, the 22nd floor of the Capitol Building. And everyone here is invited to join us. I put invitations up on the dais. And we have been open -- we invite members, men too. Since 1974, we've opened up our membership to men, and at least two of our City Council members are commission members, are members. So, thank you to Elaine and Diane for being members of our league, and we hope that you will join us. Lwvtallahasi.org to find out information about the tickets to our event, or to join us, or just to get involved. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could give a picture of you? Yeah. Is that good? Thank you. So. We're on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, so. Nice plug. Nice plug. If y'all just want to stay, that'd be wonderful. So, ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to present the next proclamation. And I have asked all of my colleagues to not only join me, but to provide comments at the end of this proclamation, celebrating Black History Month. But first, I would like to make an announcement. It's not a new announcement, but an announcement nonetheless, that back last fall, under the leadership of our City Manager, the City of Tallahassee created a new department, a new Department of Diversity. And it is my honor and privilege to introduce our Chief Diversity Officer, Angela Hendrith, who I would like for you, and we'll throw you a curve ball when we're done with the comments, I would love for you to introduce your team. So, this proclamation, we will actually be presenting to our Chief Diversity Officer that will ensure that it is properly displayed in City Hall for all to see. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the contributions of African Americans have helped shape and mold the rich history of our nation, and whereas African American History Week, celebrated in February, was created in 1926 in the United States by historian Carter G. Woodson, and whereas Black History Month was first recognized by President Gerald Ford in 1976, and whereas such knowledge can strengthen the inside of our community regarding issues of civil rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barrier of equality for African Americans, and the struggle against racial discrimination, and whereas Tallahassee remembers and honors the history of local African Americans through public memorials such as a Civil Rights Heritage Walk along Jefferson Street, the Soul Voices monuments along the Frenchtown Historical Trail, and the Smoky Hollow Commemoration in Cascades Park. And whereas Tallahassee celebrates Black History Month by honoring the achievements and contributions of our many African American leaders and pioneers through the support of the John G. Riley House, episodes on the Tallahassee-inspired video series about impactful African American Tallahasians, Black History Month events, and city-run community centers and other avenues. Now therefore, I, John Daley, as Mayor, with my colleagues, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month, and may we continue to celebrate African Americans this month and throughout the year, and witness of each and every one of you with my signature. And how appropriate that this proclamation is actually done today, I believe, on the 60th anniversary of the lunch counter sent in here in Tallahassee. And I want to ask each and every one of my commissioners, take a moment and provide some comments, starting with the Mayor Pro Tem. Diane?
Thank you, Mayor. As a little girl growing up in Quincy, we celebrated Black History for one week back then, and it was a -- for me, it was a proud week. We now have grown to recognize it for a month. But for me, I'm trying to make Black History every day, every day. 365 days in a year, and this year, I get an extra day. February 29th, 366. I encourage all of you, whether you're of African descent or wherever we came from, we're a melting pot. Let's learn to love, and embrace, and appreciate our differences, and how we can come together to make a beautiful, beautiful salad that is enjoyable to all. Thank you to the City of Tallahassee for not missing this opportunity to welcome and recognize this culture of African American. I call it black because that's what I grew up with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am extremely proud to be celebrating African American History Month. And like Commissioner Williams Cox has indicated, African American history is, should be celebrated 365 days of the year because America would not be the great nation that she is but for the contributions, sacrifice, and some gave all to make this country be what she is today in every aspect of our daily lives. There are inventors and inventions and contributors in every field of endeavor that have contributed to making America be the great nation that she is, and that is to be celebrated, not set aside as one month of the year, but incorporated into the fabric of American history. The legislature several years ago passed legislation requiring African American history to be taught in school districts across the state. Unfortunately, only a select few has done that. Leon County fortunately is one of those. But we've got to make sure that our young people, that African American young people understand the rich history and culture that exists in this country, and how it melds into the fabric of American society. All of our children need to understand that and appreciate it because it's that kind of diversity that exists in our local communities, in our state and nation, that makes our society be the tremendous society that she is. We heard part of that in our invocation this morning, incorporating the various religions and cultures and ethnic backgrounds that exist now in societies across America, and to celebrate that every month, every day, every hour, every minute, because that is how we will continue to be a great nation. And so, I'm proud to be here and be a part of this celebration and recognition. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Hey, good evening. It's an honor to represent the City of Tallahassee as we declare Black History Month for the month of February. As we know, Black History is Tallahassee history. It's all of our history, and it's been here all of our lives, and it's a great opportunity to work with a city like Tallahassee that can actually cares, and they want to preserve what they can. We recently were invited out to an old schoolhouse on the northeast side of town that's from 1870. It was an old African American schoolhouse, and some community members reached out to see, how can we restore this? How can we preserve this before it all gets redeveloped? So, our friends across the street at the county are working through an agenda item to see what we have left we want to restore. We know we have some great historians in our community who know the spoken history and have passed it on, but as a city, what can we do to make sure that doesn't get lost? And what, everything that's happened in Tallahassee continues for the next generations to continue to know. I also want to welcome Angela to the staff. It's a great department to have, and let's celebrate.
I know I was on the wrong end of the -- but let me join them in our acknowledgement of African American, Black history. Let me say to you though, I concur with all that you've heard, but as we reflect on our past that brings us to our present, where we are today, it gives us the groundswell to recognize that in our future, a lot of work still must be done, but let us celebrate today. Thank you very much.
And as our Chief Diversity Officer comes and joins me, Angela, I would love for you to introduce your team, and then if we could all take a picture together, that'd be great. Let me say in closing, what an honor it is to serve with the City Commission. For the first time in the 196-year history of our city, we have a majority-minority commission. Angela, will you please come?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials. It is indeed a pleasure to be here, and I thank you for entrusting this office with this lofty task of ensuring that diversity and inclusion stays front and center with the city. In order to do that, you do need a team behind you, and please allow me to introduce Mr. Daniel Carlson.
Come on down.
We have James McKinney, Kathleen Wright, Ada Dees, Toya Owens, Andrea Griffin, Mary Knight, Tremaine Hughes, and Sam Watkins.
Excellent.
All right. I like to love each other.
No, sir, we do not.
We are on citizen input on agenda items. Citizen input on agenda items. If you do not think that you will be able to stay for the duration of the meeting when the agenda item is up that you're interested in speaking on, now is your opportunity. Ask you to fill out a speaker card, turn into the clerk's office, and we will make sure everybody has an opportunity to be heard on their issues. As always, let me remind you, let us set the example, not only for everyone that is in this room, but is watching us worldwide, on how civility is displayed and how we conduct the business in the City of Tallahassee. With that, Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we have several speakers, but we only have one at this early portion of the meeting, and that is Johann von Toll, speaking on item 1305, which is your Public Safety Update.
It's great to see you.
You'll give us a name and address. We'll give you three minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Johann von Toll, 1503 Old Ford Drive, and I want to address an issue of public safety which in my mind is not often enough talked about, although it's a principal cause of death amongst our young population. And typically, in a typical year in the county, we have about 30 deaths and about 4,000 injuries due to traffic crashes. So, I have a little -- these are the kind of numbers for 2018, which are now finalized by the Florida Highway Safety and Department. And you'll see that we have more than 4,000 injuries, so every day we have something like 11 injuries. We even have almost every day a hit-and-run injury. So, there is a lot of really bad numbers here, and unfortunately, this is kind of typical for Florida. And if you look at the trends over the years, you see that right now we have a record number of crashes, which is like up 43% from about 10 years ago, and a record number of injuries, which is about 23% up from 10 years ago. And pedestrian fatalities, they are up by about 60% as compared to like 10 years ago. So, on the other hand, if you look at the TPD Traffic Enforcement, so you have a little graph here where you can see the noncriminal moving violations, so these are speed tickets, red light running, these kind of things. And you'll see that in 2011 or something, so the TPD gave about 18,817 tickets. In 2018, it was 7,732. So, the traffic enforcement is down by about 50%, although the crashes are up by about So, what I suggest is really to take this more seriously and take some significant steps. So, recognize that traffic deaths and injuries are preventable, and really a public safety issue. Increase traffic enforcement coupled with the educational campaigns. Adopt a Vision Zero for our county and our city, and apply for federal safety grants. There is federal safety money, but there are not a lot of grants being applied for. And what is also important, I think, is the Community Traffic Safety Team to get that back on the, in the saddle because it has been somewhat lingering in the last few years, also because they don't have a budget. And if you provide them with a smaller budget, they can really work on some educational campaigns and these kind of things. And I just give two examples here. One is Helsinki. The traffic deaths last year were three. Oslo, we had one traffic fatality. And these are cities which are two and a half times the size, or four times the size of Tallahassee. So, it's certainly possible to do something about it, and so I would like to get your help in doing something about it, you know, capital city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is obviously an issue that is first and foremost on our minds in this community over the past couple of weeks of what has happened on our college campuses. I know that the City Manager has been highly engaged with the university community. I would like to ask the City Manager to comment on where we are and what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It certainly is a contemporary discussion, and I know we're all saddened by the accidents that have happened over the last couple of weeks, one which resulted in a fatality. And I think we would all agree that we probably are more distracted as pedestrians and drivers than ever before. We've been in communication with the President Thrasher's office, and we pledged a commitment to work with them, whether it's in a communication campaign, an awareness campaign, where we look at our infrastructure, whatever we need to do to make sure that we avoid, in particular, pedestrian accidents. So, we'll keep you apprised of that as we have those discussions. We've got our Chief of Police here tonight that is going to give an update. That was the item that the gentleman spoke on, and he's got his command staff with him here as well. So, no better audience to hear these discussions and also provide feedback as we look for ways to make sure that we can be as safe as possible. But of course, I don't think we can underscore it enough, we all have the individual responsibility for awareness, pedestrians and us as drivers, in whatever capacity you're in. I think discussions like this are helpful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other speakers at this time?
No, sir, we do not. Other speakers will speak when the item's before them or un-agenda at the end of the meeting.
Wonderful. And if you would like to speak on one of the agenda items, we have plenty of time for you to fill out a speaker card and turn it into the clerk's office. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the last subject, we have also been in discussions with Florida A&amp;M University because they have a situation that is very ripe for something going the wrong way at the intersection, near the intersection of Gamble and Wanish Way where students cross to get to the food court for lunch and dinner. That's been identified as a very dangerous situation, and we're just blessed that nothing tragic has happened yet, but it is one of those situations that we're trying to rectify before something does happen.
Absolutely.
So, we're in discussions with them as well.
And I join you in thanking Chief Galloway for taking the time to come and educate each one of us on that issue, and you are correct. We are working with Amuse Campus on all issues, but not one in particular as one of our priorities. Thanks for reminding us. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Mr. Manager, do we have any formal appearances by other boards, commissions, governmental entities that come before the board tonight?
No, sir, not tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're on the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, do we have any items on the consent agenda that have been pulled?
No, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem properly moves consent agenda, seconded by Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Manager, do we have any items to come before us under Section 11 City Commission?
No, sir, not tonight.
We are on Section 12, the introduction of ordinance, 12.01. Mr. Manager?
City Attorney.
Madam Attorney, excuse me.
So, item number 12.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 20-0-05, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee updating the capital improvements element of the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for February 26, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. As of the record, reflect that the ordinance has been introduced.
Now, in the agenda that y'all provided, it actually has a recommended option. I was under the assumption that we did not need it, but would you prefer a motion for option number one?
You can do that. The requirement of the law is simply that it be read.
Okay. I think we're comfortable with the requirement of the law as we have done in the past. Excellent. Any questions for the City Attorney on 12.01? Okay. Madam Attorney, it's my understanding that we will take up 12.02 after item 13.03?
That is correct.
Okay. Let's move to item 12.03, please.
Item number 12.03 is the introduction of ordinance number 20-Z-01, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in residential preservation-1 with historical preservation overlay on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee adopted and established by the City Commission, adding a structure to -- a structure to the local register of historic places, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for February 26, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. As did the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Not necessary, but I'll ask, anyone have any questions? Wonderful. Madam Attorney, item number 12.04, please.
Item number 12.04, introduction of ordinance number 20-Z-02, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, changing the zoning classification of land from residential preservation to Cambridge Park Plan Unit Development, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for February 26, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. As did the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Excellent, colleagues. Not necessary, but anybody have any questions? Give you the opportunity? Seeing none, excellent. Do we have any other items, Madam Attorney, besides 12.02, which we will come back to, under this section that needs to be addressed?
No, we do not.
Excellent, thank you. We're on Section 13, Policy Formation and Direction. Mr. City Manager, item 13.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. This is an item certainly that I'm proud to bring forward to you. It's come to our attention through the mayor's office probably a couple of months ago. We've got, there's an effort underway by our local AMVETS Post 1776, and we have a couple of gentlemen joining us tonight from the post, and we're certainly glad to have them here tonight. And they're leading the charge to get a bell tower constructed at our Tallahassee National Cemetery, one that I think we've all seen. It's something we all should take pride in, it's certainly an asset to our community. And they're seeking financial help to raise the necessary money to construct the bell tower at the cemetery. This is an out-of-budget cycle item, so it's necessary for me to bring it to you for your approval. It's been requested that we contribute 70, the city contributes $7,500 toward this effort. I understand the total effort to be about $100,000, and I learned today that the Board of County Commissioners was also going to consider a similar item at a later date. So Robert may have a few more things he can add to this. He's been our point of contact, Robert Wigan, our Director of Resource Management. I'll ask him to add any more details that I missed, and certainly welcome any comments from the gentlemen that are here with us tonight, and look forward to your vote on this.
Sure, as a local chap, thank you, City Manager, as a local chapter, AMVETS is a private nonprofit, they've received support for their recommendation to build the bell tower in Carrollon at the National Cemetery from the Department of Veteran Affairs. As part of that obligation, they've committed to raise 50% of the funds locally. Our portion of that would be the $7,500, and as the city manager mentioned, the county has agreed that they would schedule an agenda at the end of the month to match that effort of ours.
One question, Robert, this is out of cycle. So the $7,500 contribution, if it is approved tonight, where would it come from, and would it have a negative impact on any municipal services that's provided?
We have just finished our first quarter of the budget. As we've looked at our general fund, which is where that would come from, we have a certain number of vacancies, we've got a certain number of contracts that haven't been completed, we would look to those to apply to the need for this $7,500. But then, three, six, nine months from now, we would have to continue to evaluate the budget to make sure that we balance that year-end.
But it fits into our budget. It does fit into our budget.
Yes, we'd make that commitment.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir, Commissioner Richardson.
I'd like to move, Mr. Mayor, that we approve this appropriation. I think it's an opportunity for us, I know that there are always concerns whenever we make special appropriations like this, that it might send a signal to others that they can come and do the same thing, but this is a unique opportunity for us to recognize our service veterans and those who have given all for this country. And so that's what makes it unique, and I think it would be certainly appropriate for us to be a partner in this endeavor, to recognize those who gave all. Many gave some, some gave all, and to be able to recognize our veterans in this respect, I think is something the city ought to be a part of.
And I will second your motion for staff recommendation, a little unorthodox, we do not have any speaker cards that have been submitted on this item, but of course, Mr. Miller, we would love to have you speak, and if you wouldn't mind, after your remarks, making sure you fill out your comment. As you come to the podium, let me tell you how much of a pleasure it's been to work with you and the Veterans Organization to bring this idea to fruition. This is also one of those amazing projects, where you have the National Cemetery, the county's involved, the city supports it, the veterans support it, we have nonprofits involved, and you have done a tremendous job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Yes, the National AMVETS Group nationally has sponsored 90 bell towers around the country for national cemeteries. The first one was dedicated in Arlington Cemetery in 1949. That is a project that AMVETS has taken on over the years. As you know, the Tallahassee National Cemetery is brand-new, it was dedicated in May of 2015. One thing that's missing is the bell tower. So we, as the local post, decided that would be a project that we would be involved with, contacted our national, they agreed to fund half of it. The total cost is around $100,000, give or take a few bucks. And this contribution from the city, and later on in the month from the county, will conclude our fundraising project. We have commitments that are still outstanding, but they're good, and we will be able, and they already have begun, the process for construction. We've signed some construction contracts, awaiting on final approval from the National Cemetery Administration. We hope to have the tower dedicated around the end of May of this year. And of course, the commission will be invited to participate in that ceremony, but we do thank you so much for your support. It is a beautiful facility, and only gets better. And remember, freedom isn't free.
Amen. Yes, sir. As Mr. Miller is leaving, and is there anyone else that would like to speak? That's here. Thank you, Mr. Miller, appreciate it. Before I turn it back over for comments, I see a couple of other veterans that have joined us, and I know several members of our police department also have served in military. Will you just stand so that we can recognize you as well, and thank you for your service? Sir, on the front row, will you please stand to be recognized? Thank you for your service, I appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tim for comments?
I say let's do it. It is a beautiful facility. I've had an opportunity, unfortunately, to be there for a loved one to have their resting place, and it is definitely a worthy cause, and I support the motion to do it. I know you having to raise 100,000, you only asked us for 7,500. I'm glad you didn't ask for 75,000. So surely we can find 7,500 before you think of asking for 75,000. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you, and happy to support this. It's an honor to do our part, no matter how small it may seem, and we thank you guys for bringing it to our attention. I also wanted to take a moment, it was also brought to my attention at the Oakland Cemetery and the veterans' portion, there's some headstones that have come out of alignment, and there's a group of veterans who want to help us bring that back into compliance. And City Manager Reese Code and Assistant City Manager Tetter have worked hand-in-hand with them to see how we can restore that to what it deserves to be, so I thank you for your quick work on that.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate you making that connection for us, I think it's a great opportunity.
Excellent. Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant?
Full support, thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson, thank you for making the motion. I want you to know, gentlemen, that your city commission stands behind our veterans, we're proud of our veterans, we support many aspects and activities and celebrations, but I also like to give credit where credit's due, and I think that the county veterans' office is a fine office that supports our veterans here locally as well, and Ben Bradshaw runs a great shop, and thank you for your service. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item 13.02. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, the treasurer clerk will introduce this item.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is relatively simple decision, but it concludes really a very complicated agreement and process, as the agenda item indicates. At one time, the city had a partial ownership interest in Florida Power's Crystal River Unit 3 Nuclear Power Plant, but in 1998, so a little over 20 years ago, the city sold its interest in that plant, but as part of that sale agreement, we agreed to hold funds in a trust account for the eventual decommissioning of the plant. That was, that trust fund is required by federal regulatory provisions, so that the plant could be decommissioned at some date in the future. Well, we're now near that time, they have accelerated their timetable for decommissioning, so after, actually, a few years of on-again, off-again talks with now Duke Power, was Florida Power at the time, but now Duke, we've reached an agreement with them that would call for transfer of the funds in the trust account to them. In exchange, we will be released from any liabilities. One part of that agreement did include the city bearing some responsibility for an ultimate income tax liability that may come about when it moves from a tax-exempt municipal government to a taxable entity like Duke. So the long version of that is that Pat Hurley and the city, or the short version of that is that Pat Hurley and the city attorney's office, Kent Olson and the city treasurer clerk's office, and Rob McGarra in the city manager's office have worked very well together and with the folks at Duke to reach that agreement. So with your approval of the item, we will quickly finalize documents and that sort of thing, transfer funds, and then in turn, we'll be released from any continuing obligations, so we think it's a win-win.
Wonderful. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent, we'll turn to the commission discussion. Seeing none, Mayor Pro Tim moves staff recommendation, seconded by Dr. Bryant. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.03, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask Robert to again join us. I'll set this discussion up. About this time last year, you will recall, you were deep into thought and conversation about the direction of our energy system and the plan for our community, and there was a lot of discussion, it was a great outcome. You pledged to take Tallahassee to 100% renewable energy by 2050, with major milestones along the way, like moving our electric fleet to all-electric. We just, today, when we stuffed the bus, that was an electric bus, believe it or not, we have a third of our buses that are electric, and we're well on our way to the goal that you set, that puts us as a national leader in energy policy. As you know, the construction of Solar Farm 2 at our airport was recently completed, and we have been debating how we would deal with that energy. You'll recall with our first solar farm that was brought online a couple of years ago, we made the energy available by subscription. Our customers expressed a desire to buy that energy, if you will, have that kind of a quasi-ownership position to encourage solar energy, and in very short order, it was fully subscribed to the waiting list. And for all range of customers, our institutions, Florida State University, Florida A&amp;M University, TCC, Leone County Schools, and hundreds of our friends and neighbors subscribe to that. And so we wanted to be careful how we dealt with the next solar farm, because we know that demand is there. Because we're mindful that we want the city to take a leadership position in terms of funding our needs, the needs of the city's operations from solar energy. So you know we were exploring that, we've got a recommendation tonight that I think makes a lot of sense, and it is, and Robert's going to tell you, but I'm going to steal this thunder here, because I just want to summarize it this simply. We believe that we can reserve enough energy to power every city building within the city's electric service territory with solar energy, and still leave enough for our community that wishes to subscribe to solar energy to have that access. And so that's the basics of it. There is a bit of a fiscal impact in year one, Robert will talk about that, but we believe it's manageable, and we believe it's consistent with the direction that you set to put us on the course to be a leader in renewable energy for our community as well as our country. So that's the essence of the recommendation. This is done via ordinance, because it creates a legal structure. This item is an introduction of ordinance, which you've delayed to introduce it pending this presentation, but I kind of wanted to set the table, because it fits together with the direction of where you've pointed us. It'll be a long road, it is many years, but I think this clearly signals our direction. So with that, Robert, I know I've probably stepped on a lot of that you might say, but please fill in the gaps for us.
That's acceptable, that's fine. I'm actually surprised that I get to share one bit of news.
That's the bad news.
I think many of you know it already, but I get to share it at the podium and to the public, but with this Solar Farm 2, it's operational since December, the Tallahassee International Airport, and your own utilities, electric utility, they have the largest solar farm on an airport in the nation. That's an impressive accomplishment. I think we mentioned a couple departments working together, not a complex task, but an obvious task, and it's very impressive. As impressive as then making ourselves a leader in the use of solar energy in the community by subscribing to have all city buildings powered by solar energy. I mentioned that, City Manager mentioned that there is an impact, the cost to us. The city has a utility bill for all buildings, and it's about $38 million. So we are talking about an increase, but just a 1% increase. I did read in some news articles today that there were concerns that that cost would be passed on to ratepayers. That's not accurate, I mean, we would pay for that out of city budgets, and we would budget that as we go into fiscal year '21, about a 1% change in the utility cost for each of the departments. So with, by introducing this ordinance, we'll engage the public and open up Solar Farm 2 to subscription, where about 25% of the capacity will be available to the city. The balance will go to residential and commercial customers by subscription. We do have a waiting list, and so we would serve that waiting list. One of the commercial commitments we had for Solar Farm 1 was from FSU, and we expect that they'll join us in Solar Farm 2 to make that same commitment that they made then. And we would hope that there would be other opportunities for fellow government agencies, Land County, Leone County School Board, maybe even the state of Florida, to join us to be a leader in having solar energy as their primary means to power their buildings. Be glad to answer any other questions that you have, and defer to the city attorney for introduction of the ordinance, where we'll then have a public hearing on February 26.
Do we have any questions, Robert? Yes, Commissioner Bryant?
Quick question, are we working with FAMU? Also, I've heard you talk about FSU and state and the city and the county.
We will make that contact through our large customer reps and offer that opportunity to them, too.
Commissioner, let me add, they were the very first subscriber of the program in Solar Farm 1, made a big commitment, millions of kilowatt-hours a year, so they're participating already, they may want to add more, and now we have more to add, but they were the very first commitment.
Very good. We have to keep in mind that Dr. Robinson is an environmentalist, and so of course he would be.
Absolutely. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this?
Mayor, we do have one speaker on this item, Kurt Bender.
Mr. Bender? Good to see you here. Your name and address for the record, please.
Kurt Bender, 2315 Columbia Court, 32304. October 27, 1988, the state of Florida suffered a terrible tragedy, and we were shocked, and we're still feeling the pulse of that today. On that date, the Supreme Court of Florida handed down the decision, PW Ventures versus Nicholas. Nicholas, at the time, was the head of the Public Service Commission, the PSC, and PW Ventures was a private entity that ventured into providing a power purchase agreement, or a PPA as we call it, to Pratt &amp; Whitney to power their private commercial industry. The issue in that case was whether, according to Florida statute 366.021, whether when PW Ventures sold electricity to Pratt &amp; Whitney, whether that was selling electricity to the public. The Supreme Court took the very narrow interpretation to define the public to mean one or more individuals, therefore PW Ventures was prohibited from doing that. The effect of that is- The effect of that is that private citizens and private companies cannot enter into power purchase agreements. But there was a beam of light from that that the city of Tallahassee's taken full advantage of, being that our owner utilities, your own utilities, Tallahassee owns this utility system. It is free to enter into a PPA with the Solar Farm One and the Solar Farm Two. And before I go any further, I'd like to state that I'm a private citizen. I represent no one. I have no special interest backing me aside to engage with my public leaders and affect, and appointed leaders as well. And going to the Tallahassee's plan, I fully support the use of Solar Farm Two and the great work the city of Tallahassee's doing to become 100% sustainable. However, I think that there's a lot more that we can do, and Tallahassee's uniquely situated, as with JEA in Jacksonville, because it is a public-owned company to work within the laws to open up some leeway. This will become another pointed issue, an Agenda Item 12.02. The Agenda Item for it, in two sections, the statement issued and Customer Participation Program, it notes, "Customers to support solar energy," and this is very pertinent, "meaningful way without the obstacles and risk inherent to direct customer ownership of solar equipment, which the city of Tallahassee is very wise to outsource that. However, private citizens and businesses do not have that opportunity, be extended to P.W. Ventures." Nothing that the city's doing wrong. However, the city does have a great opportunity to expand that and meet its goal even further. As a quick note, because, uh, Black History Month was recognized, there was one justice that dissented as this nonsensical rule in P.W. Ventures. His name was Justice Parker Lee McDonald, and he was instrumental in ruling that prosecutors can't recuse voters just because they're black. And the U.S. Supreme Court actually adopted that when it made it nationwide. But the very specific ask I'm here for today is, uh, a year ago, on June 30th, you all adopted a resolution that said, uh, it's Agenda Item 13.5, subsection five, sub-subsection five, sub-subsection six, that you're open to meet with stakeholders and private citizens to discuss how you can make Tallahassee more sustainable.
Here are three minutes.
I simply asked whether you all would be able, willing to meet with me. Um, I have a brilliant neuroscience student here, Julia Decker. She's a junior. She's been helping me with research. Uh, about 80% finished with the research, about 45 of 60 pages, and I think it'll make a big difference, and Tallahassee has a great opportunity to be a leader, and I think that this will go much further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, and the answer is, of course.
Yes.
Reese Goode, City Manager. I'm sure that he'll be more than happy to set up a meeting with you.
We will, Mr. Bender.
Great. I, I should actually find your contact online, Kurt Bender.
And, and we'll, I'm gonna get somebody to get your contact information as well.
And thanks for coming this evening.
My pleasure. Uh, who do I give it to, sir?
Allison Ferris is coming from the back. She'll gather your information. Good to see you, sir.
Thanks for coming. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Is there anybody here that hasn't had a chance to fill out a speaker form that would like to speak on this issue? So in the Agenda Items, colleagues, there's no actually recommended action to take place. And before we move on and take up Item 12.02 and go back to the City Attorney, I gotta tell ya, I'm very excited about this item. I was sitting, I was talking to Allison Ferris, and I hope you don't mind, Mr. Goode. I have challenged Ms. Ferris to find another municipality in the state of Florida that has a goal and will be putting all of their facilities 100% net renewable through solar. I cannot think of a single one. This action and moving forward could put us on the map in the state of Florida as the first, if not the first, one of, obviously, probably, top two or three. Um, but this is exciting. This really is. Mr. Manager, I commend you on your leadership and vision. I would simply like to ask for a ceremonial vote embracing the vision and moving forward on this process.
Absolutely.
Motion, motion made by Dr. Bryant, segmented by the Mayor pro tem. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, comment?
Yeah, I can go after her.
Sure. Uh, passes unanimously. Go ahead, Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, great, and I think you really nailed it. It's great that, one, we can make this commitment. As we know, um, we're putting our money where our mouth is. People all across our city have subscribed, and we're willing to subscribe too. But I think this is, it's so much bigger than Tallahassee, as you're saying. We're, we're sending a message to the state of Florida. We're sending a message to the rest of the country. Um, we're ready to move forward, and we need you guys to come with us.
Sure. And, Mr. Manager, I do, I want to research. I wanna know how many other municipalities are literally in the process of converting all of their facilities to 100% net renewable in the state, in the southeast, and in the nation. I wanna know where we are in leadership.
We will, we will. That's a challenge. We'll take that challenge, Mr. Mayor.
Let's try to figure, I'm sure that some of the associations can help us out as well.
We will, we will find out, and, and we, we will look nationally, too. And as, as Robert said, even our airport, this is the largest solar field in the nation at an airport. We believe the world, but we've yet to confirm that, so we've reserved that statement. So, um, it doesn't surprise me if we find that we're one of the very few that's made this commitment. Thank you, sir.
One of the greatest frustrations of mayors that I have is when you tout all the amazing things that we're doing at the city, and people say, "I had no idea." So I think we need to toot our horn and let the citizens know what we're doing, and, uh, let them know that they can be proud of the direction that we're taking. With that, let's go back, um, Madam Attorney, to item number 12.02 for the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor, for the ceremonial vote of support for supporting, uh, the city's public facilities with solar, now to, with solar power. Now we'll deal with item number 12.02, introduction of ordinance number 20-0-07, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 21-242, City of Tallahassee Code, relating to implementation of a solar farm electric service rider, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for February 26th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. I ask that the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
No action is needed, but are there any questions to the City Attorney?
No questions.
Great. Seeing none, let's move on to 13.04. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, at one of your meetings near the end of last year, several of you asked for some information on how charter review process works, or how the city's charter is updated. Um, and as the Agenda Item, uh, describes, there's not a singular process that, um, must be, must be followed. The charter itself doesn't require or define a specific review process or specific timetable. Uh, state statute does provide some guidelines, um, as to which types of changes would require voter approval or would not require voter approval. And so in the Agenda Item, we simply put, uh, several examples to illustrate what's been done for the city charter over, over time, particularly more recently. Uh, I'll point out a few of those. The, the first is your recent change to make the language in the charter gender, gender-neutral. You're able to do that by ordinance change, uh, because it didn't rise to the level required by Florida statute for voter approval. I think there, what you have is something that was an important action on the part of the City Commission, but it didn't change the substance and function of elections or, um, operation of the government on a day-to-day basis. Uh, that, uh, language requirement, again, was done by, by ordinance on, on your own. Uh, some items do require ballot referendum. Um, those, even those can be initiated several ways. One, the City Commission can simply, um, initiate and, and recommend a change. Historically, that's probably the most common, uh, way changes have been made. And the easy one, I think, to understand and recall is in 1996, the City Commission initiated a change from a rotating mayor among the elected City of Commission to a directly elected, um, mayor. That item, even in itself, the language required establishment in 2003 of a Charter Review Committee. That wasn't already a requirement within the charter, but that, uh, that ballot referendum established that in 2003, there would be a Charter Review Committee to evaluate the actions that had already been, been taken. So again, there's a, a second means. City Commission identified one. Another involved a Charter Review Committee that was appointed by the, uh, City Commission. And then finally, the, uh, citizens can initiate a, a ballot referendum, and that's probably, um, the most recent example of a ballot referendum item, and that was in 2014, when the Independent Ethics Board was, uh, established. So with that, you can see there's not a, a required process, but there are a variety of, um, means available. This item doesn't require action on, on your part. You'd ask for information, and I think it provides you what you were looking for, but if there's something further you need or any direction you wanna give us, we'll be glad to, uh, we'll be glad to field that.
Excellent. Uh, any questions for the Clerk before I take public comment? All right, any public comment?
Mayor, we do have one speaker on this item, uh, Kayla Norris Barber.
Mr. Barber, good to see ya. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good to be here, sir. Kayla Norris Barber, 818 West Prevar Street. Now, I don't know if your discussion, conversation surrounding charter review or amendment will include conversations about your salaries. But, um, I understand that the charter dictates that your salary's only 50% of the county commission salaries. Now, having worked on another side of the street as a resource manager, I know that you guys work a hell of a lot harder than those guys do on another side of the street.
Would you like to repeat that, please?
Stay alive for the people in the back.
I know that you guys, I attend a lot of, uh, public meetings, and I know that you guys attend a lot more than I do. So if you guys are only getting paid half of what the county gets paid, and I real, I know the demands on your time, and I know that it's difficult to maintain full-time employment and function as a City Commission. And if you guys plan to continue this emphasis on community engagement, I know you're having a, a next commission, commission meeting is, is not in City Hall. It's gonna be someplace out.
In March.
Where?
In March. It's gonna be at Hartsfield.
At Hartsfield. So I want you to continue the city engagement, and I want you to get paid more, um, at least equal to what the county commission gets paid. The, uh, Iman, during invocation, he mentioned supporting, um, our City Commissioners so that you guys can do an effective job. And I think that definitely should include financial support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I knew there was a reason I loved Kayla Norris Barber.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any other speakers on this item?
No, sir, we do not. Our other speakers are on unagenda business.
All right, let me start off comments, and I'll come to you, Mayor pro tem. Um, so municipal government is the government closest to the people, and our charter is our constitution. It has been 10 years since we have had a full charter review, and I am in full support of a hybrid, um, coming back. You are correct that the Commission has the opportunity to make recommendations to go to the ballot. However, I think the healthiest of exercises is to put together a Citizens Committee, provide them with ample amount of time to look at every aspect of municipal charter, from the beginning to the end. Not a piece here, not a piece there, but to take into consideration all issues. Properly staff it within the city, provide any recommendations, if any, to the City Commission for consideration to be placed on the ballot in 2022. Many municipalities do this across the country. I do think it is time for us to have a full charter review at the city of Tallahassee to make sure that the charter accurately reflects the ideals, the vision, and the proper structure of our government moving forward in the 21st century. With that, let's open it up for discussion. Madam Mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the one who opened this Pandora's box, so I, I wanna say that I am not in support of moving forward with a full charter review for these simple reasons. We are busier doing the, doing the work that the community really, really needs, and we, we're trying to do a great job at, at that. In other words, we have more than we can say grace over right now, let alone trying to manage a charter review, uh, at this time. Now, I, I, I don't, um, disagree that at some point, but I don't think now is the time for us to open it up and go forward with it and be able to do a real good job, because, one, we've all only been here, what, um, not even two years yet. So I asked for, for this information to come back, and looking at the information that has been provided, I, um, could not support doing a full charter review at this time and for the reasons that I stated. We're, I, I don't know about anybody else, but yes, I do. I know about other people on this, on this day. It's, we are running nine into nothing, trying to meet the needs of our community, and that's where I, I want our energy to continue to be focused at this time.
Absolutely. I, uh, and, and I respect your opinion. Let me just be clear. I wasn't proposing that we would do it now. I was thinking, if anything, it would be a 2022 ballot, which would provide us plenty of time. In fact, we could even wait till after this election cycle and begin a process in 2021. That would still give us, uh, 18 months or so to put together and whatnot. But I, but I understand what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
We would have the same, I think we would have the same situation, because at that time, we would have three members, uh, running for reelection.
Oh, well, we, we will always, myself included, in that cycle.
Right. You're one of, one of the three.
You know, I think that, and I'm coming to you, Commissioner Matlow. But, um, yeah, I think that any time that you have any, any charter initiatives, that would be on the ballot, um, especially a full charter review, we're always gonna have someone on the ballot. So I, I hear ya. Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I guess when, just wanna make sure we're clear on, when we're talking about charter review and charter changes, I mean, those are big structural changes typically to the form of government, um, the responsibilities of our elected officials and those sorts of things, versus other kind of things that we can just do by ordinance. And I think, um, the people have a great path. I mean, every, every day can be a charter review, and if the citizens really wanna change the direction of our city, there's a mechanism in place. They can do a petition and get something on the ballot. And I think nothing says buy-in, like a petition drive, and really the city coming together to get behind one message. Because I think when you change something like the Constitution, when you change something like the charter, it's a significant change. And I'm not really sure the value of having a separate Citizens Committee. If there was something this board specifically wanted to do, I think, you know, we've all been elected by the people. We, we should be able to have those conversations, and if we decide to put something forward, that would be one thing. But I think the citizens have a path through ballot initiatives, and we have a path, um, through our board. I don't know if we need to kind of mix the two, and I think it just causes a lot of, um, confusion. Um, but there are things that I think, uh, we don't know when they're written or why. Uh, Mr. Barber, um, you know, mentioned one of those, and how that formula got created between, um, the county and the city salaries. I don't know. Fortunately, somebody a lot smarter than me said that's up to the voters to decide and, uh, not the selected body. So I do think it, it would be appropriate maybe to check in with the voters and say, should the city and county, do they do similar amounts of work, and should their salaries be considered the same? And, um, that would be something I'd be willing to offer a motion to do to see, um, come back with some sort of language of how we can move that forward.
Seeing no further com-
Was that a motion?
It's a motion.
I, I don't understand the motion.
Sure. Uh, I, I would make a motion that, um, we have an item come back with ballot language that could describe, um, how we could bring the city and the county, uh, to equal salaries.
Question. I'm gonna look down at that.
First, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Because I wanna get a question answered.
Mayor pro tem.
I wanna look down at the City Attorney. Um, listening to, um, Mr. Commissioner Matlow's, um, motion, is that how that would work in the charter?
Well, I would recommend that we, we bring back an item for discussion for you, and we can present some options, and then you can give us direction on whether or not you wanna have me draft language and have it get on, on the, uh, on the, uh, get it to the supervisor of elections. So I would say a step before that, let's, let's do some research, provide it to you, and then have you give us direction subsequently to that.
And, yeah, that, for clarity, that makes, that's exactly what I meant. Have it come back for some sort of information about how to, how to move that forward.
There, uh, it, it, there is not a motion on the table right now. So Commissioner Richardson.
Just, just a question. I mean, if that's the route that we discussed going in, is there time to put something on the ballot? I, I don't think we would have time to put something on this year's general election ballot.
There, there is time.
There is time.
There is time. Okay.
Absolutely.
I believe June is the deadline. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the key date is, from the supervisor of elections, is getting language to them, however it gets to them, so that they have it by the time that they're, um, creating the ballots themselves. And so that, that June date that was referred to is correct. I don't have the specific date in mind, but it's June.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
My own personal opinion is I could not support that motion. I could not support an item that came back. I do not believe in amending the charter on a piecemeal basis. My personal philosophy is it's a holistic approach. You engage the citizens, partic, uh, that is properly staffed, where you bring the expertise, that you get the community involved over several months, if not a year and a half, before putting it on the ballot for full review. After, also, the Commission has the opportunity to speak. Um, that is the common way that municipalities do it, is a full charter review, not issue-specific. And I personally just do not feel comfortable doing issue-specific charter amendments. It's not to say we can't do it. I'm just saying that's not what I am in favor of. Any other comments, by chance? We don't have a motion on the table. No motion is required on this item. We don't have a motion on the table, no motion is required on this item. So, sure, Commissioner Matlow.
I just want to get back, it's, the separate from piecemeal would be, you know, issues that we want to take up that aren't structurally changing our entire form of government, and I think this, this is one of those things that we do in everyday business. You know, what we're doing with the conversion therapy ban, this is just kind of in ordinance, the rules of the city, you know, while within our authority. So just to further the conversation, I would, you know, restate my motion, have an item come back to, to see what that process would look like and, and how we can move forward, and I think we could decide at that point if it makes sense, and that would give ample time for the community to weigh in between now and when it comes back, if they even want us to go down that path.
A second.
There is a motion on the second on the table, and I will be voting against the motion, even if it should pass. Government is not run like a business, and you can have a full charter review commission that does not impact the structure of government. It might look at other aspects of the charter, it might look at the role and responsibilities, they might make recommendations regarding pay without changing the structure or the number of individuals that serve. This happens most commonly in other communities. I personally am just not in favor of piecemeal placing items on the ballot on issue-specific for a charter change. Any other comment on the motion on the table? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table? Now, your original motion, Commissioner Matlow, dealt with salary increases for city commissioners as an issue specific to come back for consideration and how that process was. Is your second motion that motion?
Yeah, the motion is to have an item come back to see what the process would be to bring city commission salaries in line with county commission salaries.
That is the motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So it passes three to two with Commissioner Richardson and the mayor in dissent. Thank you. Any other motion, since there's not a recommended action from the, from the staff on this item, is there any other motion regarding charter review that would like to be addressed? Okay, let's move forward then. We are on item number 13.05. Chief Revel, it is great to see you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, as the chief comes forward, we think it's important, obviously, you've indicated that public safety is one of your top priorities, to make sure you get periodic updates of things that are happening, in particular in TPD, but as well as in our entire public safety group. I'm glad to have the chief here today. He's, he's off to the races, very, very busy. He's got the busiest dance card in town, I think, and I'm so glad to have his command staff with us tonight.
He can dance?
As well. I don't know if he dances, but he's got a card. He stays quite busy. And, and Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I would like to take 1305 and 1306 together. They're naturally related. 1306 is the memorandum of understanding. The chief can touch on that. And I'd also like to recognize our PBA president, Officer Murphy, he's here in, in support of this discussion.
Seeing no objection from the commission, let's do it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed city officials, thank you very much for the opportunity to give you a very brief, because we know birthdays are waiting, presentation of, of kind of where we are at the police department, what we've, the progress that we've made to this point and the direction in which we will be heading over the next weeks and, and months to come. As I've stated many times, my top priority is to bring this community and the police department together so that we can collectively address the issues in our community. To that end, as the manager mentioned, our community meetings have been going very exceedingly well. They are very well attended. We are having real discussions about prominent issues that, that face our communities, where it's, whether it's crime, teen pregnancy, parental issues, I mean, just real issues that you may say, that's a little bit outside of the police department, you know, in, in what you should be doing, but I truly believe that i- if it's not our issue, we certainly are coming alongside the community to solve these issues, because they all contribute to crime in our community and, and how we move this community forward. The involvement, like I said, has been amazing. We are meeting with local pastors in the blueprint panel, the Tallahassee Urban League, the Neighborhood First Initiative, Link Up, several neighborhood associations, business associations, as well as many of our city departments, that we are pulling together collaborative efforts to address, to identify our objectives and our priorities, and then coming up with, with the means to target those objectives and make sure that we are meeting those objectives. Internally, we have promoted three new deputy chiefs, which I'm very excited about, two of which are here today. So Deputy Chief Tanya Bryant Smith, and Deputy Chief Jason Larson. Deputy Chief Maurice Holmes is in crossover training. He's a Georgia certified officer, and so he's getting his Florida certificate. So he's in that training now and couldn't be with us tonight. Also want to identify several of our majors, which are with us tonight, Major Sam Garrick, Major Derek Friend, Major Andy Johnson, and my new chief of staff, Major Mike Seleski. And I too would like to thank the PBA president, Richard Murphy, for being here today. Obviously, you all know better than, than anyone about our new police department and the excitement that that has created within the department. We are very excited about that. We are moving forward with special needs analysis as we are preparing to meet with the engineers and the architects and push that forward as quickly a, as we possibly can. Our citizen advisory committee opening, we advertised that for two weeks, and we received about 70 applications for that. So I'll be meeting with Pastor Ferguson next week, and, and we will be going over those applications to make sure that we are getting representation from every area of our community. And we will look at how we best structure that committee, that committee to, number one, function efficiently, but also to make sure that that information flow from my office to the community and from the community back to my office is happening for every, every area of our community. So very excited about that. We also are working on our officer advisory committee so that that transparency of information is internal as well. And we are also creating a juvenile advisory committee, because we have to hear from our juveniles and hear how they see today's problems and how they want us to help them address the problems and, and move forward. We are looking at the 2016 through 2020 strategic plan and making sure that we are setting ourselves up for strategic plans for the future, so that our 21 through 2025 plan meets the needs and the expectations of, of this city and the police department. Where technology is involved, we are pushing the envelope there. I know, Mayor, you have asked several times that you want to know what we need, and we are compiling that list so that you will understand the sticker shock that goes with that. But obviously, if we are going to be the leader in this community and in this nation, these are issues and these are things that we have to address. So public safety cameras are something that we've talked heavily about and, and we're moving forward with, the recording of our traffic cameras and the ability to do that and through legisla, I mean, through legal parameters and safeguards to make sure that we have access to that when we need it for investigative purposes, our license plate readers and recognition, our intelligence-led response to, to crime and real-time crime centers. We are working collectively like we have never done before with the other law enforcement agencies, with FAMU, with FSU, with TCC, and with the Leon County Sheriff's Department, as well as our state and federal partners. I've met with just about every leader in all of those agencies, and we are all committed to address this problem together. I think you're going to see some, some major movement with that real-time crime center very soon, and everybody coming together to make that a reality. And we are looking at our intel and our analytical restructuring to make sure that we are addressing those needs, as well as technical support of our investigations, which I mentioned, one of the, the traffic cameras being one of those major pushes as we go there. We are also looking internally at the wellness of our officers, because that is critically important. So two of my majors, Major Porter and Major Clark, who couldn't be here tonight, are heading up that committee, and they will be looking at not only the mental, but the physical, the spiritual, the dietary, and the financial well-being of our officers. So that is something that's very important to me, and, and we are pushing that forward. We are working with the city to make sure that we incorporate all of those programs that would be efficient and effective for our officers. I am working with Mr. Kayla Norris Barber to, on the officer and residency program. As we look at housing and issues and how we address that and how you, as the city, move forward, we want to be a partner in that, and we want to make sure that, you know, if we can do a program like the officer and residency program, you know, we support that. We want to be in the community, and we want to be engaged in that in any way and shape we can. So we're moving forward with that as well. So I know I started to have Mr. Cook set the timer so that I, you know, I knew where I would be, and I knew I raced through that very quickly, and I will get to the MO.
You get a lot more than three minutes.
Well, I'm trying, sir.
And I'm not going to be the one to tell him to stop here.
We will get to the MOU in just a second, but I wanted to stop right there and see if you had any questions for me on, in any of these issues.
Yeah, more of a comment before I turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem. Let me be very clear, I know that to bring and make sure that we are a 21st century department and providing all of the tools that you need is going to be expensive.
Yes, sir.
But from our perspective, I'd rather know now so that we could properly budget over several years, absorb it into our process so that we have as little of a sticker shock impact as we can. That's good budgeting, that's the right way to do it.
Absolutely.
That's why we want to be upfront. We want to know what we need to do now, so over the course of the next three to five, 10 years, we can get it done.
Yeah, and I appreciate the, just the conversation, just the fact that we're able to have the conversation and, and consider these tools, which are so effective for us. Thank you for pushing that initiative.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem.
You may have mentioned it, but I wanted to be sure that, that I heard it, and for the people at home listening, want to make sure that officers are receiving sensitivity and diversity training and
Yes, ma'am.
knowing how to work with young people, as well as people who may have some mental illnesses or some other disabilities. Too many times we hear in the news of things that are happening in places not here that cause us to think, you know, could this have been resolved differently?
Certainly.
So we want to make sure that our citizens know that you all are focused on addressing those kinds of things, and your goal is to de-escalate as much as possible instead of escalating. So I want to, want to make sure of that.
Yes, ma'am. We have that training built into our regular training cycles as part of what we do every single year, sensitive, sensitivity training. We have our CIT training, which deals with mental illness and how our officers respond to and should respond to people with mental illness. I had a conversation two weeks ago with someone in our community to deal, who deals with, with the hearing impaired part of our community, and it's been a while since we've done that training, so we're looking at that. You know, if you, if you follow social media and Live PD, we just had an issue with, with probably, you know, one of our best officers on Live PD does a fabulous job, but just, you know, made a comment that, you know, many of us take for granted, you know, each and every day, and we received informa, you know, we received some feedback on that, and, and, you know, it's, it, that's something that we need to remind ourselves of every day, you know, and he was the first one to get on social media and say, you know, hey, that, that was my mistake, that was my fault, you know, I certainly didn't mean anything by it, but it's a great reminder for all of us, and it speaks directly to your point, you know, that that is something we have to be aware of each and every day and remind our officers of. So we incorporate, every time those issues come up, we incorporate them into our training as part of the standard of what we do every single year.
And I was glad to hear you talk about the other things that you're doing that to take care of the officer. We heard yesterday at the wellness breakfast about a firefighter dying in, in his sleep a while back
Yes, ma'am.
in what Brian Smat said, the things that they're, they're incorporating to try to make sure that you, 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 you all in that line of work are in good health, you know, and, and not, these kinds of things are not happening. So I'm glad to hear that you have some stuff built in to help to alleviate, de-escalate stress.
Yeah, deal with the cumulative and, and critical, specific stress that the officers deal with.
Very good.
Excellent. Any other ques, uh, Dr. Brian?
Just a comment, just a comment. I'm glad to hear that the training is evolving.
Yes, ma'am.
I would suggest that as training evolves and is given, that as incidents happen, that they are chronicled back to determine if the training actually was successful. Because many times we do training, but we don't know if, if the training was even
Sure.
changed behavior.
Right.
Let me put it like that. So I think if you can start out trying to create that parallel, that, that, that might serve us well.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I want to say how excited I am about the kind of leadership that you have already brought to the department, and it reaffirms for me that we made the right decision in selecting you as our leader in the police department.
Thank you.
I think every action that you've taken from that point until now suggests to this community that we can expect the finest public safety organization, not only in Florida, but I believe throughout the country. We're positioned to do that.
I agree.
Especially with our new police headquarters coming online and our commitment to support you and the technology that will be needed in order to make that happen. And so we just look forward to continuing to work with you as you engage our community to make Tallahassee and Leon County one of the safest communities for our residents and guests that it can be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I look forward to it as well.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow.
You've been everywhere.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I've been following it on social media, and I think I, I got another invitation to come to something I think you're doing tomorrow night, so.
Right, yeah, meet and greet.
Meet and greet, yeah. We'll be there with the family and
Yeah, great.
You know, we're proud of seeing you really reach out and, and try to be everywhere you can, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. So, Mr. Manager, will the chief be introducing the MOU item, or are you going to introduce item 13.06?
I'll, I'll let him summarize it, and then, so 1305, we can move right to 1306.
No action needed on 1305, so we're in 1306.
Yes, sir.
Memorandum of understanding.
Sorry, let me get to that paper. Well, let me just summarize it. I don't know where the paper is. Basically, we have, before you, we would like to, we have had a longstanding issue with the inability to promote from sergeant to lieutenant based on the contract that was in place in 2017, which goes through the end of this year, and, and grievances towards that program, we have not had the ability to promote supervisors for the, for basically the last two years. So one of the priorities when I came in was to meet with the PBA and President Murphy, and, and we brought group, you know, a group from each side together and sat down in a room, and I'm very proud to say, you know, we hammered out an MOU that we took before the membership, and this sergeant to lieutenant MOU was approved by the membership as a stopgap to fill the void until the assessment center comes online later this year. That will be, the first part of that assessment center will be at the end of April with some other testing in May, and if everything were to go perfectly with that and no grievances and, and no issues with any of that process, it would be mid to late July before a list would come before me with the ability to promote. So given the gap that we've had, we have critical needs that we've identified in leadership positions, especially at the lieutenant level, that we would fill, and we would only fill those that we have, we have identified as critical. So it is, what's before you is to ratify that MOU that has been agreed upon, and I'll take any questions that you might have as far as further history for that.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk, on this item?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Is there anybody here from general public who would like to comment on this? Anybody from town's police department want to comment on this? All right, let's open it up for.
If I could add to that, I think it's clear, but just, just for great clarity, this modifies the collective bargaining agreement for which you approve.
Right.
That's what we're negotiating this year, but the agreement that's in place, this will change that, it will create a, as the chief said, a stopgap process, so it's very much needed. So we wanted to get that on this agenda, seek your approval of that, which certainly allows the chief to move forward quickly.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Commissioner Richardson.
Madam Pro Tem.
No, go ahead.
I'd move acceptance, staff recommendation on item, what was that, 12.06?
13.06.
13.06.
13.06. Been properly moved staff recommendation by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Keep up the great work, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, men and women of town's police department. Thank you, men and women of Towns Police Department. We really appreciate everything that you're doing for us.
We do.
Do we have any other items come before us before policy formation and direction?
No, sir. That's, that's the extended policy.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, we're on unagenda business items. Anybody from the general public that would like to speak to the commission on any item that's on their mind? We will provide you the opportunity to speak. If you will please fill out a speaker card and you can turn it in right over here, we'll make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak. Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we have a few speakers at this portion of our meeting. The first is Harry Brown. He'll be followed by Dr. Hollifield.
Mr. Brown, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
You all try to make certain that I'm first every time, don't you? But anyway.
I'm sorry?
I'm Harry Brown and I reside at 431 Crump Road, Tallahassee. At our last commission meeting, I asked the commission if there were any of you who would like to have been treated like Officer Antonio Gillum was treated in the way he was handled in signing his contract. Neither of you responded to the question. Every one of you know that the way Reese Gold handled that contract was despicable. You know that Reese Gold should be terminated immediately. You all know that Reese Gold cannot be trusted and does not have the integrity or character to get the job done in an amicable manner. That would, in an amicable manner, that would be pleasing to any reasonable community. It is very strange that during Mr. Gold's recent evaluation, there was one of you all that had odds with his job performance. Mr. Matlow knew all along that there was something wrong with his performance. I don't have to ask the other four of you if you are still in congruence with his performance because it is obvious that you are. This government has been operating in this manner for longer than a half century. In 1975, a group of civil rights activists got together and filed a lawsuit against the City of Tallahassee for its mistreatment of black employees and other minorities. Out of this lawsuit, the consent decree was born, which was supposed to last until 1995, a 20-year span. The city hired a gatekeeper whose name was Sharon Strong, now known as Sharon O'Fahony. She made, she made reports to the federal government on the progress of, on the progress the city was making in curtailing discrimination, mistreatment of blacks and other minorities. Sharon reported that the mistreatment had stopped after seven years. It did not stop then and it still has not stopped. The city needs to heal from other, of over a century of abuse and mistreatment of blacks and other minorities.
We have about 30 seconds remaining.
Until this city heals from its wounds, it will never be a viable government. A berry of ministers came to rally around Officer Revel. They can hug him until they choke him, but it won't work until the city heals of many years of festering. This city is rotting to the core and I worked here for 20 years and I know, and I will be coming later to explain to you some of the ugly things that I experienced in this government.
Mr. Brown? Thank you. I do appreciate it. And our next speaker?
Next speaker is Dr. Hollifield, followed by Richard Dusenberry.
Dr. Hollifield, great to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Dr. Hollifield, Longleaf Court, and I doubt you're glad to see me. But in any event, since we got all these police here, I'd like to know, first of all, when a white man calls the police on a black man, good things seldom happen. I repeat, when a white man calls the police on a black man, good things seldom happen. Now, after giving Big Ben Cares $1.5 million, they called the police on me in my neighborhood, right across the street from where I grew up. What you think about that, Mr. Mayor? Two police, right across the street from where I grew up. Because Big Ben Cares called them, called them on me for going to a ribbon cutting. What y'all think about that? And why we, we're supposed to take it? What does Revel think about that? And has Revel dealt with that black grandmother?
Who is?
Tased for walking on Dunn Street? What you gonna do about that? Where did Revel go? Disappeared? He left too early. What you gonna do to make sure that no more black grandmamas get tased for walking on Dunn Street? Where there ain't no sidewalks? What you gonna do about it? Diane Curtis? Oh, Curtis, you just do whatever the white folks tell you to do. But let me just go on this operation juggernaut. With all the corruption committed in broad daylight in this city, why would the city now do anything in secret? It doesn't make any sense. Remember General Dynamics? Tataran? Tataran and Israeli company providing radio, military radios to the apartheid regime in South Africa? General Dynamics? American company, just as corrupt, capitated, capitulated at $8 billion at the time. We gave them $5 million, $4 million from the city, another million from Innovation Park, and then the chamber. Chamber is the most corrupt entity of all. The city said this is a bad deal. Even Viscony, Frank Viscony, y'all remember him? Said it's a bad, bad deal. The chamber said, I don't care what y'all think, we gonna do it anyhow. So what did the chamber do? They started a bond fund. When it matured, another million dollars they tossed in. Tallahassee trustees, a secret arm of the chamber. They say this deal is going to go down whether you like it or not. And that's what happened.
Dr. Hollifield?
Even, I want, I need to finish up. Even the Tallahassee Democrat, which now has no blacks on the editorial board, it took us to 1990 to get one black person on the editorial board, Lynette Carroll, now they had gone back to no blacks on the editorial board. What kind of madness, Jim Crow scenario is that? Not one black. Mike Longhauser, city employee, went out to recruit Tataran. When he got brought him here, Tataran turned around and gave him a job. New York Times came down here, y'all need to read it. Read what the New York Times said about the city of Tallahassee and all this corruption that took place. November 13th, 1988.
Dr. Hollifield?
Go read it.
I'm asking you to work with me.
So I'm saying, I'm saying what we have is a corrupt government. I'm saying you can continue to have all this violence and shootings as long as the income inequality, income immobility continues in the city of Tallahassee.
Dr. Hollifield, I'm going to ask you to please wrap up your comments for me, sir.
And until y'all do something about that, these shootings, there ain't gonna be no solution.
Dr. Hollifield, thank you. Will you please wrap up your comments for me, sir?
Well, I'm saying that y'all need to do more than be, you know, happy-go-luv, this do-nothing, be-happy, you know, attitude.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
There's absolutely misery in this town.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
When you got a 20%.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
Illiteracy rate, you got black babies still dying, four times white babies, and you got money for everything, regressive taxes for juggernaut, but nothing really to deal with all of the pathology that exists in this town.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield. I appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Richard Dusenberry and then Freddie Miller.
Mr. Dusenberry?
Mayor, those are the last two speakers for whom I have a card at this time.
Thank you for joining us. Certainly appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Richard Dusenberry. I live at 439 West Georgia Street. I've distributed to the commissioners and to the manager a little pamphlet on City of Tallahassee land use regulation in Frenchtown. I know that I can't change any minds. What I have undertaken instead is simply to try to document what my experience has been living in Frenchtown. And it is surprising to be on that side of the color line and cope with the city's land use program. This is a copyrighted pamphlet. Item two in it is a proposal for making the decision-making in that area of land use regulation based on information. And I would like to have that be made a public record and I have copies for you, but it's item two in your pamphlet. I'm sure that you've read the whole 40-page pamphlet. This is a proposed statement of principle for land use regulation. City of Tallahassee, land use regulation shall address best practice and principles of good urban design and shall address social justice. That's it. I really think that the COT regulation in the City of Tallahassee is out of control. I know of only two instances in which there's been a city commissioner who has really stepped in and made a difference. One was Charles Billings, who saved several houses on Georgia Street from an aggressive effort by the city to take over and demolish those houses. And the other one was Gil Ziffer, who voted against Cassanis Village, saying Frenchtown deserves better than this. And I think that the only way to begin to get good principles in the staff here is it's going to have to come from the top. It's going to have to be the city commission taking charge, setting what the principles are, what the values are, what the policy is. So that's what I'm here for tonight. This will give you an opportunity to talk to each other. I know that you're constricted yourself as to what you can do as commissioners, but please figure out some way to talk to each other, go into some of these things. If you need any more information, just let me know. And really begin to try to hold the city staff responsible for doing a much better job of land use regulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Richard, thanks for coming out and joining us when we did our Frenchtown walking tour. We certainly do appreciate it. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Freddie Miller.
Hey, Mr. Miller. Good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Freddie Miller Jr. I live at 6001 Sharmouk Street. I want to, first of all, I want to say good afternoon to the commissioners and Mayor Daley, appointee. I'm here today celebrating Black History Month, which is a very appropriate time for the subject which I have on my agenda. Let me give you some of my background first before I get to the main subject of my speech I got here. I was raised in Tallahassee, born 1957, stayed here to 1978, which I graduated from Rikers High School, went on to FAMU for a short time, joined the military, served in the military for 10 and a half years. I was a part of the Gulf War, the first Gulf War. Stayed down in South Florida for about 34 years, recently moved back up here. And I was very disappointed to see the dismemorment of the black history here in this city. And I was glad to hear that you guys, you know, now you have a minority city commissioner board here after 196 years, which I think that's kind of suspect, but, but black history is very important to me. And I was very disturbed when I, me and my wife got up on Martin Luther King Day and decided to go down and hopefully join the festivities at the Martin Luther King Day Parade, which there wasn't a Martin Luther King Day Parade, which, that is very disturbing because like you just mentioned, that this was the, this is the anniversary of the sitting up at the Counters. And we sitting here with 31% of this population in the City of Tallahassee is black. About 90,000 black people here in this city. That's the city limit, the ninth largest city population in Florida. We sit on one of the highest hills in Florida, but we yet shine the dimmest light on black history, which is very disturbing also. Now, I would like to do anything I can to join you guys in helping to develop, start a Martin Luther King Day Parade here because it's very, we're talking about not just a black American hero, but an American hero. Someone who died for this country, for equality, for justice, for all. And I see no reason why we're not joining and showing the example here in Tallahassee, walking arm in arm with the police department, the education, the bands and all of the other young kids that looking for us, for example. But we letting the history of America die because of whatever reason it is. Now, I resort back to my, my little speech here.
I need you to wrap up your comments in a little bit.
Oh, we, oh, I got two seconds, okay. Now, when we, when we started this thing and I came in, we got, we got a lot of things that disturbed me for that. Want to just see what we could do about getting this thing started as of next year, if possible. I mean, I challenge the commission board right now that this is not a thing where we're going to be pulling teeth. It's not very difficult to start a parade here in Tallahassee, the capital of Florida. Now, we have other cities in Florida that has a budget, I'm sure, lower than the one that you have, that you're sitting on right now, that are doing something in regards to Dr. Martin Luther King, American icon, the most recognized probably American hero in this country.
I can get you to wrap your comments up. I think you're going to be pleased.
Yeah, and anyway, that's what my, that's what's on my agenda today and I hope you guys hear what I'm saying.
We hear you loud and clear.
And you can get back with me and I would like to join in with the development of this situation.
Ironically, I had the exact same conversation with the city manager a couple of days after Martin Luther King Day. And I have heard that a couple of my colleagues, and I'm going to recognize the Mayor Pro Tem in just a second, that had a similar reaction. While we have some amazing events to celebrate Dr. King and his legacy, I agree, we need a parade. I was talking to my colleague, who's the mayor of Pensacola, Florida. They have a huge parade through downtown Pensacola. And I think it is, I agree 100%. I think it is fitting for the capital city of the state of Florida to have a parade, pull many of the incredible events that we have together so that we can just have one huge celebration. I'm with you 150%. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
The pleasure seeing you again. We, we met yesterday and I invited you to tonight's meeting to.
Right.
To, to make your case. I didn't realize that this was your, the issue, but let me just share with you that we, we haven't been sitting idly by not recognizing Dr. King. The local chapter of the NAACP spearheads a march every year from CK Steele Plaza because Reverend CK Steele, former pastor of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, which is my church, worked with Dr. King and, in the civil rights movement. So that plaza has been named for Dr. Steele. And that's where the march begins every year. And we march up the hill to the Capitol where we do celebrate. We have, we do lock arm in arm with law enforcement and everyone, the community to march up the hill, to have speeches and talk, deal with it. This year, we, our focus was on the youth and we normally have a day of dialogue to try to make our community better. We have not had a Martin Luther King Day Parade, per se, but there is a march that has occurred.
Yeah, I know this. I was present. I was present this year down at the CK Steel Bus Station, and I saw you guys down there, which I was almost in tears to see that we have minimized the life of Dr. Luther King, no respect, no disrespect to CK...
Let me disagree, let me disagree with you.
Mr. Miller, let us comment.
I'm trying, I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
Don't look at the number of people who were there, and don't look at the, no one's minimizing Dr. King, not on my watch, not on our watch. So that's not the issue. Now, if you can figure out how to get us to show up on Martin Luther King Day, the day that we have off, to come down and give honor to Dr. King, then we're all ears, because we can sponsor the program, we can provide the program, but we're not going to pick people up to bring them. So they gotta, you know, you gotta help us, the community's gotta help us to come together. But nevertheless, we are planning to work on some issues to make, to make next year's celebration even bigger. But we have to work with our partners. The NAACP has led this, and so we are, we have to, we're working with not only the NAACP, but other organizations to make this bigger and better. It's not just incumbent upon the city. We have to have stakeholders, we have to have buy-in, so that the parade can participate. We know how to do parades, we do parades here, but we are going to need to do that, and we are happy to solicit your help. We're happy to have you at the table to help us make it all that it can be. So thank you for volunteering to be a part of the planning.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yeah. I would just like to challenge you on that, and let's try to get it done next year, if possible.
Absolutely.
I can leave my information, and we can work together to try to get this resolved.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No further speakers, Mayor.
Excellent. Anybody else here have any final thoughts? Seeing none, let's go to the sharing of ideas. And a Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, I see the honorable governor of this state, as I heard at a recent meeting, has entered the room, the Reverend Greg James is here. I heard somebody call him governor, so we're glad to see you in the audience, and I don't recognize the gentleman with you, but thank you all for joining us in the chambers. And I just want to, again, reiterate the importance of having our community work with us on a lot of these things. You know, we can only do so much, and we thank you for those of you who have joined us in this effort. We're all, we're open to hearing, we're open to meeting. I think all of us have, this is a full-time, this has become a full-time job for us, because you all are just that important, the community is just that important. I don't do anything else but city commission work, because in order to do it right, you gotta be focused. And so I'm trying to focus, and I'm trying to hear everybody who want to talk to me. So if I miss somebody, forgive me, give me another chance. So whatever is going on in our city, our city is not rotten to the core. It is not. We can show you some cities that are worse off, but we won't call names. We are doing our level best to try to make our city the best city on planet Earth. And we do have issues, we do have opportunities to do better, and that's what we're trying to do. Please join us in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one issue that I wanted to actually bring to your attention, but it addresses, I know, some issue, an issue that we have with our police department, and that is the issue of recruitment. When I was at East Gadsden High School, we had a law enforcement academy. It was a partnership, at one point, that partnership kind of dissolved over time, but it was a partnership with Tallahassee Community College, but many of the students, chief who graduated from that academy, went on to serve in police departments in Gadsden County, maybe in some other areas, but I know there were a few that, that did go on to serve in police departments in Gadsden County. So I was gonna suggest, Mr. Mayor, when you meet with the superintendent and county commission chair, that maybe that could be an issue that...
I would be more than happy to bring it up.
...be raised to the superintendent and see if they might be interested in something like that to help with our recruitment of police officers here in Tallahassee.
Great idea.
Okay. That was all I had.
Great. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, I'd like to suggest to my fellow commissioners, as well as those of you in the audience, you know, we have a great booklet that talks about what we did last year. I'm very proud of it. I'm taking it everywhere I go, because what I want people to know is that we're not sitting idly by doing nothing. We have engaged in this last year, and we're doing the same thing this year in order to move Tallahassee forward. Are we there yet? No, absolutely not. But we are striving day by day as we implement goals and be accountable for the things we say we're going to do in order to, again, make an indelible mark that at the end of this year, we will review again. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question for you, would it be better if we all sang Happy Birthday, or would it be better if we just go home?
I'll pass along your sentiment.
All right. Right on. That's all I got.
Thank you. Two items real quick, excuse me, I apologize. Two items real quick. I have announced earlier today that I have created a mayor's advisory council on LGBTQ+ issues to help keep me abreast on what's going on in our community, and I am thrilled that 12 individuals have agreed to serve, and I'm looking forward, moving forward. We will probably meet on a quarterly basis, and this is a great opportunity for them to keep me and the commission, if you're interested, abreast on what's going on. And so I will keep you posted regularly on the actions of the committee itself. Finally, I want to remind the general public that on February 18th, we have the Taste of Tallahassee. This is a tradition that we started last year, wildly successful, it is open to everyone in the public. It is a way, no matter where you come from or what your political ideology is, it's a way to celebrate the fact that we are the state capital, we are in session, and that will be from 4:30 to 7 o'clock on February 18th. I do want to wish my son a very happy birthday today, and with that, we stay in the journal.
All right.